Randy, you want to lead us in the pledge? That's Dan.
Jenny David.
Here.
Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltie.
Here.
Brenda Simmons.
Here.
Craig Scott.
Here.
Any additions or corrections to the agenda, commissioners?
I have none.
Addition. I just got the budget on. And I, any discussions?
The budget itself, there's budget committees, do you want to add to that?
I want to talk about budget.
The budget, okay, so let's, let's do that before close session, so you want to do that at H and then make close session I? Any other additions or corrections?
No, I want it before a close session.
That's what I said.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
No, make that H budget and make close session the final.
Alright.
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else? Item three, public comment, any public comment in the room on agenda items, agenda items only? Any public comment in the room related to agenda items, any public comment on the phone? Item four, appointments, Brett Giltner, get two things, user license agreement for online vital records, request application and position vacancy and job description.
Um, okay, the first thing, the user license agreement, I just, I need a signature from you for this. What it is, is a vital request link that's going to be put on the county clerk, on the Ogumah County webpage, but under the county clerk tab. It's not costing us any money, it is basically a way for people to request their vital records, birth, death, marriage, online, so we have a lot of people that call and it's kind of a back and forth process, we tell them, send us an email, written request, and then we send them back information, and then they send back information. This will take care of all of it in one thing, we can just direct them to our website, they'll click on the link. It's a five dollar fee, that's where the company per medium makes their money is the five dollar fee for, for the transaction. And then they take the payment, they take everything, they do the checks to make sure everything's valid. But Tim said that it needed your signature, so it's, it's of no cost to us, it's just going to make it easier for us, more user friendly for our customers and hopefully, cut down a little bit of the foot traffic to our office by utilizing this, so.
I think this is excellent.
Yeah, yeah, and it's free.
People's schedule doesn't always coincide with hours.
Right, yeah.
Is there anything that they can't get on, online, that they still have to come to your office for?
No.
For records.
It's just all, but yeah, it's just all vital records, so no, they can pretty much, they can do any, they can get it whatever for vital records. So I just, need a signature, it was this program or another program that was going to be twenty thousand dollars, so we chose this one.
Good choice.
I thought.
We don't need a resolution for any, I think, but it's just a signature?
Well, it's a contract, so yes, you should have a resolution.
Okay, is it going to be an annual contract? Or just a once and done?
This, yeah, so this, this specific one is a year. And then there's terms in there, there's, we can, we can stop this at any point, we just have to give them, it's a thirty day notice or sixty day notice.
Sixty days, I see that, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Yeah.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yeah, but come here. You said you get five, five dollars for the, the, the company that has this gets the five dollars, don't we charge fees for this? Don't, when they come to the office and ask for this stuff, don't you charge a fee for copy of marriage license?
So it's fifteen dollars for the first one and then five for any additional.
But do we still get that, if this is for free and they just give?
We will get that money, yeah.
So could you explain that in a little more detail, so, yeah, well, using this fee won't be just the five dollars, it'll be that plus the fee, that they should be paying us.
Yep, so say you wanted to not come in, get a birth certificate, you would go on to OCMI, click on the link on the clerk's page, fill out your information, pay the five dollars, and then that company gets the five dollars, we, at the end of the month, will get a check for everything that was purchased.
So how does that money take place, they get the five dollars, how, where does the fifteen dollars come? Let's say for, for, let's say marriage license, whatever it is, they must collect more than five dollars.
We collect that online, somehow it'll get to us, you punch in your information to pay the fifteen dollars.
I understand, but what I'm saying is, if they send it to us once a month, what we're supposed to get, then they must collect that fee that we charge also then.
They're only getting the five dollars.
No.
I guess I'm not understanding.
What is the customer paying?
The customer is paying the five dollars to per medium and then.
Fifteen dollars to somebody else?
To per medium, but per medium's paying us at the end.
That's what I said, I asked you, you said no.
Okay.
Well, we, we. Okay, so yes, we're getting the money in the end.
Yeah, okay, I got you, I didn't want to make sure we get our.
Sorry, I didn't understand.
They're not getting a percentage or anything.
No. It's just a straight fee, okay?
Yeah.
Can this one to our legal counsel?
It's you, I didn't know if you've sent it.
What?
Let's go to our legal team?
Yeah, I'll, I'll send it.
I can't remember if I sent this one or not, I don't think we did, yeah, I know, I just asked you about it and I needed a signature.
Can they still come to the office?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And that, that dealer is going to be secured?
Yep.
Okay, that'd be my only question.
Yeah, there's, it's a new company, there's a couple other counties that have already started using it, and I reached out to them, they, they like it, it seems to work really well for them. So.
The younger people do, but the older people don't.
Yeah, I know, so, yeah, you can play, you can still come in, you can still come in.
Any other questions? So we'll just make sure before we, before next week, that our legal team sees that.
Yeah, I'll send it to them.
Position vacancy and job description.
Um, so I'm not sure what more information you guys need from me or want from me.
Somebody, everybody had an opportunity to look over that, was there any, where is it? Last night?
Uh, there wasn't an attachment to the board packet for this, right? It was just a nice.
No, I didn't see it, I saw the job opening for.
I seen the email, but.
Friend of the court. Appropriate court or what? Yeah, it was the email.
So it's not on our iPad?
Well, it'd be in your email.
In the email.
The job description, yeah, this isn't my thing.
I meant to include it, I apologize.
That was you. I just assumed you didn't because it was email.
The email you sent.
Yep.
Questions, comments?
I would like to just format it into the, the format that we've been using, so what, what you've got here is an health standard list of duties. What, what's missing is the, job experience qualifications, and this one is probably high school diploma and something along those lines. Uh, and also, we, we include working conditions, you know, you're working in office conditions, expecting lift up to twenty pounds, whatever, you know, that's standard language is.
Right.
But I would like for all of these to be in a consistent format, so we all know what we're looking at when we see essential duties, we all know what it is.
Right.
But it's just a clerical matter at this point.
And I do believe the other ones in my office are.
Yeah, they are.
Like that, so yeah, it just needs to get to that.
Questions?
I don't have a question, no, I'm in favor of doing this.
This is a full-time position, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Questions? Okay, item B, Brian Gilbert, Sheriff related to sheriff's service fee structure. I didn't see it back there, I'm sorry. Seen everybody else, I just didn't see you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Uh, something very simple, here we, we are requesting a, a service fee adjustment. We'll need a resolution to do that, um, in your packet you have the adjustments that we're, we're posing to do. It's not much, much increase, but it is an increase, we, we, we base this on our surrounding counties, so we're looking for support for that.
Yes, this is competitive with surrounding? Yeah, there wasn't much of an increase, but when's the last time these fees got increased?
I couldn't tell you.
It's been that long?
It's probably been a while.
According to mileage fee, probably not, that was recently run off. Because eighty-seven cents a mile. Geez.
That, that might change years.
Year though. Yeah, two years ago, it was only like sixty-five.
Yeah, that, that now it changes.
We may be confusing that with the reimbursement that we have, which is like sixty-five and a half cents.
Oh.
This is a different.
This is a different program?
Allows for the eighty-seven.
Well, let's just go with a dollar even then. Why, why are these like seventy-five cents?
I could, just basically to round out the cash coming in, so we don't have to have a bunch of change, basically.
But it's sixteen seventy-five, twenty-one seventy-five, that's change.
Well, I, it's changed, well, it's, it's a round change, rounded up change.
I thought it was odd too. I see before it was sixty.
You'd rather have twenty-two bucks?
Yeah, but. Surrounding areas, so we want to, we want to.
They like having quarters laying around, I guess, but.
How much of this stuff on these fees do you do?
Uh, quite a bit of, we do quite a bit of it.
I don't, yeah.
The life scan we're doing all the time.
I don't see a problem with this, and I think that's helpful, beneficial, questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, um, you know, like life, like fingerprints, employment, now, this is like somebody needs to get a job that needs fingerprints, right, it's got nothing to do with they've done something wrong.
No, it's like for a teacher or for a nurse.
Okay, same with licensing?
Yep, yep, they have to have fingerprints.
So. What, is there anything here that, that's criminal, that, that?
No.
That it, they've done something wrong and they have to get fingerprinted?
I'm aware of, of, that's.
Okay.
That's ordered by the court, the court will, will send them over and have to do that. That's court ordered. This is just for the, the fees for services that people need that to, to move forward in their life, I guess, for.
Okay.
For employment or what have you.
Then why is the last one's thirty dollars going up to thirty? And all the other ones are only going up five dollars?
Well, it's probably because we did the, the study, the surrounding areas, and that's what they're charging, and we're, we were, we were basically pretty low on that, so we increased it to be competitive.
Isn't that, isn't that a criminal, vulnerable and impaired person? The one you're talking about, Commissioner Scott?
Where you at?
The very last one.
At the very bottom.
Fingerprint, vulnerable population.
Five there.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I don't know exactly what that is.
Oh. Okay.
But it's a service that we provide.
So do they have to get fingerprinted in the county they live? Or does it matter?
Yeah, in the county they live, yes.
Oh, so then.
Well, they don't have to, I mean, they could, they could go, they could shop around, depending.
That's what I mean.
Depending on what it is, so.
That's what I mean, if I charge thirty bucks, is it going to say, well, geez, I could save, I could save eight dollars if I drive all the way down the Gladwood?
We don't want everybody from Roscommon coming down here because they can get it cheaper, so that's why we want to be competitive to.
Oh, I, I want to, I want to raise the price higher, okay, I, I don't want to be competitive.
Well. But this is what we're introducing and.
Okay, I get that, I get that, but what I'm saying is, you're taking, you gotta, you gotta devote somebody to do this, right?
Yes.
How long does it take to do an average, a number of fingerprints?
I have no idea, um, or.
An hour by the time they walk in, do the paperwork?
No, it's relatively quick.
It's quick, I've had a couple of them done.
I just did mine there, like five minutes.
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
It's quick.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
I'm just wondering, you know, because people's time is.
Very well, that's fair.
You know, you're devoting somebody to do something.
It's a fair question.
You know.
Thank you. Is that it?
Yep.
That's it?
Yep.
I asked.
We go to twenty-five bucks on all.
Thank you.
They made the decision. We're letting everybody else, we talked about it, but what, this didn't go there.
We're trying to raise money, I thought we were trying to raise money.
It did raise quite a bit.
Five bucks?
Five bucks on each service.
You don't want to make another five bucks?
And then fifteen dollars, I'm letting him make that intelligent decision. Because I know nothing about these services.
It's fingerprints. Fingerprints, it only takes ten minutes, do you say? I'm, I'm just saying, why not get twenty-five?
I had to try.
I mean, is somebody going to drive to another county?
I did.
Worth four dollars more?
I had, my, where my company told me to go.
Oh, well, you went because your company told you that, but I mean, somebody shows up and it's, you mean it's twenty-five here and I can go to Roscommon, it's only twenty-one seventy-five, well, I'm going to burn eighteen dollars worth of cash and drive up there and save four bucks. That really, is that really going to happen?
Do you really want him to redo all this? You want him to redo all these?
This is a spreadsheet, you should be able, you should be able to put twenty-five in there, copy it and put it right down on an Excel spreadsheet and hit the button and, and it's done, what are you talking about?
I'm asking you, do you want?
Yes.
Change all these fees?
Yes.
I don't, I'm good with these fees.
I'm good with these.
Are you good with these, Commissioner Mahew?
Yeah, one meeting, we're trying to raise money, next meeting, we don't care.
Commissioner Wiltie?
I mean, I do understand what Commissioner Scott is saying, we are trying to make sure that we're where we need to be, and, and we are trying to raise money if we can, raise costs if we can, but they did the homework, consistent with other counties. I'm fine with that, I'm fine with these numbers.
Item C, Mike Bowers, emergency management coordinator, grant program expenditure. Mr. Bowers, are you on the phone? I don't see you in the room.
He was, yeah, he's on here.
Yeah, he's on here.
Mike?
You.
Oh, there I am, I'm unmuted now.
You're on the phone.
Good evening, everyone, I hope everybody's doing well, and I apologize for not being able to be there in person. I have a request for a, a, a one hundred percent reimbursed grant request from Homeland Security Grant twenty twenty-one. This is for a FEMA incident command class, ICS three hundred, this is part of a, a two-course program, we're doing the second half of this in November. It's for our first responders, EMS, fire, police, also local officials. Although I do not have any local officials from anywhere in this particular class, we have ten students. And the request, I, the way that I had written it, I had only requested that, uh, that, that we forward the eight hundred dollars of the two thousand for the total of the cost, but since then, the Fire Association and the, the Michigan Fire Board had requested that we pay for the three hundred class upfront forward first and then get the reimbursement from Homeland Security, and then the, the fire will take care of the four hundred course, both courses are the same price. It's a, uh, something with the, the training officer of the Fire Association explained to me that he's not able to fund the three hundred course, but he'll be able to fund the four hundred course. So Homeland Security will pay for it with you fronting the money upfront and then being a hundred percent reimbursed ninety to a hundred and twenty days, and then the four hundred course in November, the Fire Association will be paying for that second half of program.
So all you need in this letter to us, Mr. Bowers, all you need is the amount changed?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and you'll get with Tim on that? This is a hundred percent?
I will. I will get with Tim on that. With, with lunches and everything, this course will cost just under twenty-five hundred dollars total, but again, it is a hundred percent reimbursed.
Are these individuals from Ogumah County?
Uh, yes, ma'am. And it's being held right there in that building at the EOC, and this is for people who would be either command unseen or in the EOC. This is training, so, uh, they can operate in expanding or large incident situations.
When is the class?
Uh, the class actually starts tomorrow morning at eight AM. And, and, uh, none of you had the prerequisites for it, so I didn't solicit you for this particular class, although I do intend in the springtime to start working on prerequisites with at least some of the commissioners.
I'm, so I apologize, I do see that, October twentieth, twenty-first and twenty-second. Thank you, thank you for this, any, any, any comments, questions for Mr. Bowers?
No, I, I think we should do this, Mike, Mike called me the other day to tell me about this, because we're certain members together and I helped him with some of the emergency management stuff, so, no, I think it'll be refunded a hundred percent. Hope's our county, for sure, we, we should do this.
Commissioner Scott?
No, no, I have a problem with.
Commissioner Simmons? Mr. Mahew? Thanks, Mr. Bowers, we'll put this on for, uh, next meeting.
Thank you very much, you all have a wonderful evening and a safe weekend.
You too, thank you.
Okay, bye-bye.
Mr. Ruth, good evening.
Good evening. I have a request, I spoke with Tim, mapping solutions is a, doing a new plot book for MSU Extension, and they're requesting the use of our GIS data and our BSNA data for the land ownership. Typically, we charge twelve hundred dollars for those data downloads for private companies that are doing this, but they're doing this for MSU Extension, and last time we gave it to them for free because we didn't really have any fees in place, our GIS hadn't been updated, so it really wasn't usable at that point for them. But I thought, uh, should ask you guys what your thoughts were on this.
Is there going to be any cost now to you guys on this?
For us, there's no cost, it's, do we charge them twenty-four hundred dollars for the information?
Correct.
They're selling it for a profit for MSU Extension, and so I don't know, I mean, they charged, I don't know, last time, I think it was thirty-five dollar plot book, I had to pay for our office for part of this, for our debt.
Whatever, do, do you have anything to add to this, like, what do you do with these books, can you tell us about these?
Yes, absolutely, Julie Darden, MSU Extension District Director, these plot books are sold by the 4H Council, and the money benefits 4H programs. So while it is true that 4H is organized under the umbrella of MSU Extension, this really is the 4H Council that's doing it, so it is, it's a nonprofit, essentially used, and they report any money that they gain and they pay sales tax into the state of Michigan or anything that they sell.
Does the, does the money stay in Ogumah County for free?
It does, yeah.
All of the money?
A hundred percent of the money that is, uh, that is profit stays in Ogumah County because it is a project of Ogumah County 4H Leader Council.
Questions?
Oh, no, plot book sales are good.
Commissioner Wiltie?
No charge to us, but benefits, benefits our county 4H members. Think we should.
How many, how many of these books did you sell last year, last year?
Um.
They do it every three or four years.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I think the last update was twenty twenty, and then before that was twenty twenty six, twenty sixteen, excuse me. And I'm not sure the quantity that they sell, because we sell some here in the office, but they're also sell, sold on behalf of 4H at other area businesses, so you can buy one, for example, at Tractor Supply Company. There's one place that you can buy them, they're, I think they're sold at the, maybe the City of Rose City City Hall? Sorry, that's a lot of city.
Rose City Hall.
One more thing, so the key thing is, if you're positive, is the one hundred percent profit stays.
Yes.
You're, you're.
Yes, absolutely.
That's the key for me, that.
Any money that comes in, the, uh, the council, the 4H council, which is made up of 4H volunteer leaders, is responsible to report the income and also to pay sales tax to the state of Michigan that is collected on those items, but then the money that is gained stays here and is, is managed by the council under the guidance and under the rules of 4H, which is enforced by MSU Extension. Essentially, if, you know, they have their own employer identification or tax identification number, but it's all, we make sure that they're not misappropriating the funds.
And you don't know how much money they made off this, say, three years ago?
I, I don't have a total, no, but we're still selling the twenty twenty books, so the twenty twenty books are sold until we get a new book, basically. So we have, I mean, we have occasional customers come in, um, I'm, I just, I don't have those numbers, I can get them, but I don't have them in front of the spare.
Commissioner Simmons?
No, what did you say the fee was going to be, if there was a V?
We charge twelve hundred dollars for the data download for BSNA and the same for the GIS data. So it would be twenty-four hundred dollars for both downloads, normally if it's with Zillow or, uh, a couple of other companies buy them from us.
So for-profit organizations?
We charge.
Well, we charge everybody to this point.
Yeah, I got you.
That's, and so that's what I brought up to you guys to, to make that decision.
Your turn.
Commissioner Mahew?
You know, I, I think if we can do stuff for the kids, we should.
With no cost to us.
Right.
What are your thoughts, Randy?
I don't have a problem with it, uh, I would like to tell them I'd like to get three, three plot books because they use our data and it costs us seventy-five dollars for a book. So we should for our office use, I think we should be able to get a couple free copies.
I think in the communication that was shared in the board packet, it said they would make available plot books as well as full-size county maps, so I think if, if you can define the number that the county would benefit from having, you should ask for that, as a.
I will, because we've got a map in our office and we use it a lot, people come in and we kind of show them different things in the county and, uh, they're, and I forget who gave us it, it wasn't, we didn't get the map from Mapping Solutions, we got it from someone else and, uh, anyhow, it's, it's quite expensive to purchase those maps.
Yes, I purchased a map.
Yeah.
What's this big look like?
So we all agree as long as the money's staying in Ogumah County, 44H, we're all okay with this, and Randy gets what his request is.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
This will be in the form of a resolution that you'll have to pass to waive that fee.
Okay.
Put it out for your state. And give me your number, we'll put that right there.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else, Randy?
The, I was asked also, you guys wanted to talk about, uh, moving forward, if you're going to do a Headley Rollback election or something. And I don't know if it's later on the agenda or if that's tonight, but I have a fellowship meeting at seven in Luzerne, so I've got to leave for concerns of if. You were planning, I don't see it on the agenda.
It's not on, yeah, it's not on here, but there's a lot of information on iPads, I looked it over, um, last night, I read through it all, it's, it's, it's good information, it explains it, it breaks it down, I, I don't have any questions on how, how they override. But I think we're talking about doing a committee summers.
Yeah, that's where.
Yeah, that's five A.
Village summary, so I, I think that maybe there'll be more to come, that, that I think will apply to that group.
Okay.
We're going to leave now, but I won't be here for that.
Does anybody have any questions related to the information?
I don't have any questions, I just, I just know I had spoken to you, I think, last week, you said that you would be willing to work with us and kind of be a spokesman and, and help us, because we know if we do this, the main thing is going to be education, making sure we get this message.
Yeah.
Consistent.
I, I can help you guys with that, and I went through and I started a spreadsheet and I kind of got the historical data from ninety-four and how Headley and Proposal A have affected it, so you're kind of getting a double whammy on the taxes and, and so I've got a lot of the numbers, I don't have everything yet, but it all. So when you get ready, if you're going to do it, you're going to do some type of a campaign that you can have the information to show people what's been going on.
Thank you.
Did you have a question for him, Commissioner Simmons?
No, I, I saw some of that in his office today and, um, it's a good resource for us. Even, even for anything, it's just a good resource for us, that information.
You saw what?
That, uh, that, that.
The spreadsheet I'm working on.
Yeah.
It had to show, it, it, it's not really ready to show anybody yet, I'm still working on it, she was in and so we kind of went over it. And it kind of shows, I mean, I guess I could have brought it tonight, but overall, the assessed values for the county from ninety-four up like three hundred and eighty-five percent. But the taxable value is only up about two hundred and seventy-five percent. And then with the recaptures, the, the DDA capture has gone up nine hundred and ninety-seven percent since nineteen ninety-four. So a lot of the new construction, a lot of that new assessed value in the last ten years has been all in the DDA districts, that's just, so anyhow, just trying to track and show some of that information so people can see it, I guess.
I appreciate that.
I think it's a little bit a good resource, I really do, I saw part of it.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Item E, Honorable Scott Williams, probate court judge, position vacancy. Come on up, sir.
Evening.
Evening, Judge.
All right, well, last time I was here, we were here about a friend of the court opening. Uh, we did hire for that position, she was supposed to start next week, this morning again. This morning, oh, the other morning, I got a phone call, said she changed her mind and not gonna take the job. About an hour later, I got another phone call. The lady. Who left friend of the court to take the job in the court wants to go back to friend of the court. Which she can do pursuant to the union contract, so now I have. Her position, the, the guardianship conservatorship clerk, mental health clerk. Open in my office, I just need your blessing to post it and fill it, um. Think I've ever had enough trouble. Hiring somebody lately, so.
Is there a reason for all of this, Cap?
Well, I don't know, uh, the, the reason given. The, from the way that took it. That changed her mind, she got a better offer somewhere else. Which. So be it, um, and the lady that wants to move back, um, just didn't. Job wasn't what she thought it was, she's more comfortable doing what she used to did before, uh, which actually results in a little pay decrease for her, cuz she's. She's going back down, but she chose to do that, and again, she, she can prove pursuant to the contract, but now it leaves me personally short again. This time it's in the court, not in front of the court, so I'm just. Looking here to.
I seen that.
Get your blessing to post it.
I seen that job description last night, now I can't seem to find it, but the pay was really low, was that a part-time thing?
No, that's, that's your, your contract.
Maybe I'm looking at the right, I, I guess.
Right, it's right here.
Where, where, why am I not seeing it now, I looked at it last night.
Thirty-four, three ninety-three.
Oh, the.
Yeah.
No, the, that's the court.
Have a hard time finding people.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's the contract.
It wasn't hourly, it was just a salary.
It was salary.
Yeah.
They, they work it out to hourly, but that's, it's a salary. That's, that's what it is, I, trust me, if I could pay more, I would.
I got, I just see that and that was, it was late at night, so I.
Well, in the.
No, I don't see it.
In front of the courts is a couple thousand less than that even too, so.
I don't remember seeing what the, uh, job or what the, uh. Was it high school department, I, I looked at.
Yeah, the minimum qualification, high school is a former equivalent. And at the bottom, uh, the lady to pass the certified electronic operator exam, she can record in court. Um. Prior legal court experience preferred, but, um, it's not a, not a position where we require a degree.
There it is.
So that's, that's what I'm here for, just. Just get your permission to post it and.
Well, this is mandated, this is not a position you have to have, right, yeah, okay.
But, uh. Since it's. Technically a new position, it's, it was, I think I gotta post it for the union for ten days or whatever it is. Then if nobody bumps into it, then public, so I could be a month without anybody again and.
How long was the person there that was, that, that left?
Well, it's. The, the juvenile register left, she went back, she was at a point in her schooling where she couldn't do it online anymore, she had to go in person. So she left. And the, the guardianship conservatorship clerk bumped over to that position, cuz that's a different, that's one higher pay grade. And so that left the, the guardianship conservatorship clerk open, the lady from front of the court went upstairs to take that, now she's gone back down, so. Um. The, the one that had been there that left had been there. Longer than I've been here, so she'd been there probably, well, seven years, I think, cuz. She had just enough time to get invested, I think is what, what. What she had said, so, but she had worked at the jail before she worked in the court, but. She was there when I got here, so.
So this is gonna probably save us some money, this is a brand new start, this is gonna save money, this is a brand new person, starting wage coming in.
Yeah, starting a year one, so.
Yeah.
But like I said, I need her, I need somebody, and I need somebody that hopefully. Will stay here.
Yes. Questions, comments? Commissioner Mayhew, questions? Comments, Commissioner?
Post it.
Thank you, sir.
I'll get a post it, thank you much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Ryan Veeder, planning and zoning administrator, address fee structure, let's see Ryan in here.
Had an unexpected, uh. Call, he, he couldn't be here tonight, the handout that he provided, uh, gives you the information about what our current fees are for signing addresses. Proposals are. Uh, I don't know that you're gonna see a lot of requests for multiple addresses, but if they come in, he's got that accounted for in here. Uh, and also, I just want to point out the. Change of address, if an applicant or resident were to initiate a change, typically that's like a number, or they wanna be numbered off a different street. He has a fee for that, I don't know why anybody would ever want to do that, but if they did, yeah. But we'll see the grief of that and actually pay us, uh, for their privilege. Uh, so it's, it's pretty self-explanatory, uh, he did, uh, like the sheriff, uh, did pull a number of other counties that, um. Assign addresses, and that was the basis for what he proposed here.
Questions? Comments?
No, no question.
Hey. Item G, Penny. Economic Development Corporation revolving loan fund grant. Good evening.
Hello.
Hi, you had a bunch of emails on here.
Uh-oh.
Related, related to this, it looks like you had some conversation about this.
Yeah, um, so we have a grant through the USDA for our revolving loan fund. And, um, we've been struggling because so many people, um, are used to having, um. Freebie money out there, or. I should, let me say that again, we're doing loans, people are used to having, getting grants because of COVID and, and during that process, and so. I think it's taken them a little while to realize that there's not the funding for certain projects that there used to be. And so we finally are ready to loan our first, um. New business, um, it's twenty-five thousand dollars, and I was working with, um, Jackie Morgan, and because of. The way we've always been situated, um, the money needs to filter through the county. Um. And I wasn't sure how that would work now.
Cuz your email response back was you wa- kinda wanted us left out of it.
Yeah.
Well, if that, in, if it wasn't required that it come through the county, absolutely, I, I don't think.
Right.
We should be a part of that, but it sounds like it's a requirement, this is another one of those, um. USDA grants, uh, like what we go through with the vehicles, and we get the paperwork, it's the exact same paperwork, only now it says for the revolving loan fund. So the way this would work, it'd be very similar to what we do with emergency management, when we act as a fiduciary for those sirens, for instance, um, amongst all the other counties. Uh, same thing would happen here, uh, the EDC would request to draw down, it would be processed, um, like any other bill that comes through. Um, and check would be written, then it would go to the EDC. Administer the program from there, so literally just a pass-through for us. I, I don't, I didn't see any, um.
The payments is where it starts to get sticky, because the payments then go back to the county. And then that filters back.
So it comes a revolving fund, just like our housing program is, so it's always, it's perpetual in that way, you will. Obviously be privy to the books on that, so you'll see what's available, somebody comes to you, applies, you'll know how much is available, you'll know what the criteria are. Uh, so it, it should run very similar to the housing program, except you won't be here like housing is.
Okay. Commissioner Simmons?
So the terms come back to the county, then they go in your account, right?
Yes.
Yes, I understand, okay.
It's too bad the county.
I just wanna make sure I understood that correctly, yeah.
Yeah, the, um. The. Grant that we have through the USDA. Will be done at July thirty-first. So any, any. Uh, the grant, our grant is ninety-five thousand dollars, so whatever we could loan between now and July thirty-first is all that would come filtered through. That would be done, that process would be done, then it would just be those loans being repaid. That would filter through. And all the loans will be done within seven years.
Awesome.
And you do understand, it, that's totally unused to administer, we're just writing the chat.
Yes, yes.
To administer what?
Well, if, uh, one of these loans goes into default, for instance, there will likely be some language in the loan agreement that says if, if it goes into default, here's how we're gonna. Get our money back, usually there may be a lien involved and something and.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Uh, on this particular loan, it's all the equipment that we would be buying.
I, I'm sure someone's gonna look into all of this, yes.
Right, well, that, that ends up being EDC's responsibility.
We already do this with housing, people, people already buy houses through housing, and they're paying payments through housing that comes through our bank accounts already. And then goes to housing. Well, it's in a spend.
Um, they're not buying, this is, uh, housing rehabilitation.
Rehabilitation, yeah.
And furnaces and things of that nature, and there's literally a process, it's just like going to a bank and getting a mortgage, you know, there's paperwork that you have to sign, there are disclosures that, uh. Lending person needs to make, uh, and among those is, uh, what happens if I don't make my payments, and it sounds like you've already looked into that.
Yes.
But housing, it literally is a lien on the property, so if, if it's not paid, if it gets sold, we're first in line to, well, probably second in line after the bank, uh, for any proceeds.
It really wouldn't be our money, it'd be their money.
Right.
It's their money, it just filters through on the, uh, just like. Emergency management, we, we, you, you mentioned the sirens, same thing, the grant comes through. Us and then it goes right to emergency management, the sirens get bought. You know. Yeah, we act as a fiduciary.
Commissioner Wilson, did you have something?
So is this something we're gonna have to, we'll have to vote on for next Thursday?
Right.
Resolution?
It, it will be to receive the grant, really.
We for sure, we already have the grant or?
We have the grant, we, we, we have the grant, we have our first, um, loan request.
Okay, out of the grant.
Yes.
And you can spend up to ninety-one thousand up till.
We, we, we have, we can spend ninety-five thousand dollars. Um, that's how much the grant was. This, for, um, none of the loans that we do are over forty thousand, and none of them are over seven years. Um, this particular one is twenty-five thousand.
I'd like to add to this too.
Go ahead.
On the EDC, I'm not on the tax revolving committee, but I've learned a lot how this works. So obviously, you know, it's, it's a bad deal where we're at right now. Financially, and, and we had to, you know, cut our funding with the EDC. But this is a way for us to, in some words, to say that we can help them out, because with this revolving fund, they also only have so much time to lend this money, they already have the money. But they only have so much time, but this money is theirs, it's revolving, so it's getting back and it, it comes back to the EDC. So it's really a great opportunity for the EDC to, you know, create some profit, some profit, and then have. That profit continued to flow into the future, so.
But whatever we don't loan by July thirty-first, we forfeit, so.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Ben.
Item five, discussion items, village summary.
If, the summary is just the villages that we have right now, when they expire, what they're used for, um, you know, Commissioner Molsy wanted to talk about, um. Headley and committee, um, uh, to. For, for all the stakeholders to look at these and start talking about what village should be put on what ballot.
A strategy, yeah.
So in twenty twenty-three, it looks like sheriff's office, road patrol expires, the veterans expires, the commission on aging expires. Correct?
Right.
So definitely be three villages on. The budget. Or on the.
There's transit in twenty-four.
Correct, I'm talking about. Next.
Well, that's twenty-four.
Uh.
Transit will go on it.
Well.
Yeah, the next one is in twenty-four.
Right, now, what that means though is transit will collect on the winter twenty-four bill that goes out, but that'd be the last one. So by the time December twenty-five rolls around, if that village has not been renewed, then it's going to expire.
So the transit needs to be on there then, that's what we did before we.
Yeah, because twenty-five is not an election year, which means a special election, which means additional cost.
So can we, uh, go through this again?
So then there's two that expire, there's two that expire in twenty twenty-five as well.
Right, now they would expire in twenty-five, um, they would receive their last, uh. Uh, installments in twenty-five, and so they would have to be on the ballot in twenty-six at some point.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I understood that correctly, I'm sorry, Commissioner, go ahead.
So anything with the two thousand twenty-five expiration. Would have to be on the ballot in.
Twenty twenty-six.
Twenty-six, right.
And there will be an election in twenty-six because it'd be gubernatorial, right?
Yeah. Okay, so then what? What puts that for us right now for this, for our upcoming elections? You know, we have.
Sheriff. Transit.
Road patrol, transit.
Veterans.
Veterans.
Commission on Aging.
Aging.
And possibly.
And hopefully Headley.
What in twenty twenty-three does that?
And we haven't heard anything from the schools?
No, I have not, um, they had a meeting the other night and. They never got back to me to tell me what they decided, if, I don't even know if they talked about it.
But the problem there is if you tag something on, you pay for the election, they don't.
So what did you, what did you wanna, was this your request, village summary? On here?
Well, it just has a part to do with, you know, trying to. Get all the stakeholders together to, to find out who that's gonna be, and then to strategize. When is when the rest to go?
I think it's a great list.
It'd be really nice to know from the schools, because we're, that's a, that's an important part of the strategy. Uh, Tim, are we one hundred percent sure on the expiration for the EMS? I mean, I know it says that there, but.
I took it right out of the ballot language.
Okay. I would just like to, you know. Get the stakeholders together. We, we obviously need to make a decision what we decide we're gonna do with Headley. Um. But once we made that decision, then we'll basically, you know, know what villages we have, and then we should just. Have a meeting and strategize when it's best to go with these, I mean, we already have, we, we know what, November twenty-first, we have to be for the February. And I would really like to see Headley go in February. That's just my, my.
Did you share that legal opinion with these guys? Or no?
No.
I didn't either, okay, we got a legal opinion on the.
Just to make sure that it was.
Your legal opinion says what?
That we can put these on that, uh, February. Ballot.
Yeah, so that, no.
What do you mean by these, all, all of these?
We could put any, any village question can go on that ballot, there was a question, somebody.
Yeah, people, there, I had people calling me saying that. In the past, they haven't been allowed to put any villages on the February presidential primary, so we got a legal opinion and. You can.
Yeah, until November twenty-first to get it there.
To me, yes.
I think that, uh. There's already four gonna be on there on Topo Beach Township, I, I definitely think a lot of thought needs to go into this.
On the February ballot?
I, I don't, I don't know about that, I.
Between the three, between the three days.
Yeah, I think I, uh, a lot of thought needs to go into this, a lot of people, I, I see the other aspect of things, and a lot of people are financially. Really struggling right now, so. Um, I definitely, these, these four that are already. Uh. Passed, um. Definitely, definitely wanna work hard to keep these. Uh. Keep these effective.
Well, you take veterans, you're talking about a point one-two-five.
But do we know, we're not sure yet though, if that's what they want to stay with, or if they're gonna ask for more, right, that's just what current millage.
Well, yeah. Um, yes, uh. Commission on Aging is point seven-four, I mean, that's. That's.
Commissioner Simmons, did you have something?
That's three quarters.
You, if we put the Headley or some other, uh. Village on there, that's probable to the Headley, right? If it doesn't pass, then it gives us some direction, what we have to do next, next year for that budget, rather than waiting until, um. There's an November ballot, I would rather. If it, if it passes, then we know what direction to go, if it doesn't pass, it'll be a totally different direction to go. So I think the sooner the better, so it shows us where we're going. What do the people want? If you don't want it, then it tells us. What direction we have to go in, if they do want it. Then we take a different road. But I think the sooner the better, uh, I agree, I'd like to know. Where we're headed. Uh, and if it's headed for more layoffs or, because I don't think our, our funds are going to increase any really. And, but everything else is increasing, and, and we all know that. Uh, in any business, personnel is the biggest liability we have as far as expenditures. So I think it's important, the sooner we know. What direction we're going in. The better it is for us. So we're not wasting our time. On something that may or may not happen. At least this way, we know what's happening.
Yeah.
Without trying to guess it.
Yeah.
If, if you guys do choose to put that in, in the February, that's, will that cost us money? Put that on?
No, the understanding is it will not.
Good, I just think whatever, whatever decision is made, we, we better make a smart one, cuz these other four villages that are on there. Good, I just think whatever, whatever decision is made, we we better make a smart one because these other four villages that are on there. We uh need to maintain those services and and hopefully the the public votes on them.
And 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 they will, but this is um. This is the life, this will be the lifeline of the county really.
Right.
In February, and we have to know if the people want to. Go in that direction or if they would just rather. Cut a lot more services out of, out of our budget because that's what we'll have to do.
Right, I haven't been around to the townships as far as asked their thoughts, I haven't put the feelers out on this. Um, I mean, I guess you guys seem to be pretty strong related to this Headley, do you, do you guys wanna form a committee or do you wanna do this?
We'll just do it with a budget committee, we can do that. But I I'm, I'm with um. I'm with uh Mister Wilson right now. We need to know what direction we're gonna be going into. Before it comes to budget time.
Do we remember?
And if people say no, that tells us where they, where they, that tells us where they want us to go.
I I understand, uh do you recall what it failed by the last time?
Not by much.
Just got your. And that was pushed hard, like I remember, I remember Karen, I remember seeing you guys out in the public. Really, really, really pushing hard for that at the parades and all the events throughout the downtown week, uh Friday nights, so I I recall that. I I wasn't in this position at the time, but I remember. Uh, there was some serious, uh, yes ma'am, were you, what?
Yes.
What, what do you want?
The comment is this. It didn't fail by that much. And the reason it did fail was because when I asked. When I went in and said, oh, you're voting for this, right, my dad said, no, I'm not voting for that. Why not? He said, because the paper said it only pertains to homestead properties. That killed that election. That absolutely killed that election. Karen would her should be out of votes for that. But that's my, he said it's only homestead properties, of course I'm not voting for it. So that's why I went down, because of what was written in the paper.
I'd like just to add a couple of things.
Go ahead.
Um, I disagree with Commissioner Simmons, I I think we should have a a meeting set up with the stakeholders regarding each one of these millages that are gonna go. Of course, it can be an open meeting, any of the commissioners could be there, I, that's how I feel. And then, again, I think February is our our best chance of success, we don't have a lot of time. But we have to act fast, we have to act smoothly, we have to act. You know, we have to take the right people that are going to. Buy into this, and these are the people that have to go out and spread the message. We can't have. Thirty different people spreading the message and the message not be as clear from one person to another to another. We have to know exactly what we're gonna say. And to agree with Commissioner Simmons, we have to show to our residents. What they're gonna get out of this and what they're gonna lose from this. And there is a lot that can be lost if this doesn't pass. Uh, but we have to, it's. I can't say it enough that we had to have a crystal clear message. Obviously educating not just the townships, we have to go everywhere, we have to have people in place that are gonna quarterback this. To go again to the donut shops, to go everywhere to get this out, but the message has to be clear, concise, and it has to be insane. And it has to show the residents exactly what they're gonna get out of, out of this.
And I I, you guys are welcome for your, it, you're on committee on this, why, why do you think it should be in the budget committee?
Well, it it would be part of the budget, but it could be a committee unto itself also. But um. You have thirty days to get it on that ballot. That's all you have left.
You're talking about all the stakeholders, I mean, that's gathering, um, that's gathering some.
I'm just talking about the Headley.
I I know, but Commissioner, we're, we're trying to figure out just a direction right now. Commissioner Wilson is talking about all the stakeholders, um, the the Sheriff's Office, the Veterans, the Commission on Aging, the uh Transit. That's a lot of people to get together in the next thirty days and to come up with a strategic plan.
I I disagree, I don't think that's a lot of people on a matter like this.
But you don't know everybody's schedule, um, I, and not that there's a lot of people, that wasn't my point, my point is you're, you're unlimited time.
Well, we have.
Gather all of these people for this timeframe.
We are in unlimited time, but it's a very important matter, and I think that people really pull together. To strategize properly as best as we can because it's that important.
I disagree with you, everybody's, everybody's got their, their own opinion, go ahead.
Yeah, I spoke with um Mister Booth today. And he would, he would be part of that, and he's, has the most knowledge. Of of the taxes and what we're getting and what we could lose and all that sort of stuff. So he's an important part of this whole thing. And uh. There will be, um, we talked about putting a um. A presentation together. Slide presentation, so everybody can see it, the figures will be there, people can ask questions, et cetera. So. And I, and I think that's the route we need to take, and we need to. We need to get out to the public to show them, but in in my, my thoughts are this. We can go out and do that and we can work really hard. To show the people what's involved in this situation. And this Headley uh proposal, anything is basically. Made the survival of counties uh financially almost impossible. And um. So they don't, they don't want it in February, but there would be a a slide program that we could present and show the people. And we can show them the figures right there, this is what this means. They don't want it. They don't want it.
I, it sounds definitely like the two of you guys are 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 pretty uh involved in this and and pretty passionate about this. I, in my own opinion, I think that there should be a committee, you guys should come up with a strategic plan and and then bring it back to us. Because we, go ahead, Commissioner Scott, I'm sorry.
Basically, you got this, this, the sheriff, road patrol. You got. You got the, the public transit, and here you got two members of the transit committee sitting right here. The veterans. For their point one two five and and. And Jeffrey, you know, these are not volunteer. Things, everybody's working at these, so you grab Jeff and the sheriff. And the two from the transit committee and meet at the Commission on Aging and you got the whole thing right there, done.
You got it.
So get there at noon and you can have dinner with the vet, with the old people like me and and uh. And have the meeting. It's, it's not a big thing, you just wanna ask every, all the stakeholders, is this the rate you want? And what's your idea, what time of year do you wanna put it on? It's not that hard to do.
It, I don't disagree that it's not hard, but I think it really needs to be thought out. Um, and and everybody's opinion needs to be on the table. Fairly, honestly, and and this is also the thing that is extremely, they feel extremely passionate about as well. Is it passionate about is, is the Headley, uh I mean, so they have a voice in all of this, I feel as well.
Oh, absolutely.
Try to get their villages uh passed, I think the next year is gonna be really tough.
Yeah, absolutely.
With the public every day, I I I hear the concerns, so. Derek, do you wanna add to that? How do you feel? You're the only one here. I didn't see Jeff on the phone, no.
Say, no, we've been, we've been working this village since January one of twenty twenty one when I started, we've been, we've been. You know, been, been out there trying to convince people that that we're needed, and I think we're pretty successful at that. And we're gonna continue that. I I think August would be fine for us.
That's, I agree.
How do you feel about a committee or or gathering with, do you think that that's needed or not as far as the strategic plan?
I'll meet with Commissioner Wilson, absolutely. It's important, we've gotta get that mileage passed for that road patrol. Um, but we're working every day to to get that passed, so. We haven't given up, we need it, we need it back.
Okay, so there's, there's your answer, I I didn't, Commissioner, was there anybody else that wanted to sit around this committee, I think two commissioners? Commissioner Scott, were you, I.
No, I don't need to, you got, you got transit already covered right here.
Agreed.
And uh, and then, and then uh. Commissioner Wilson's on uh law enforcement. Already talking with the sheriff, so you, you got the representatives. Like I say, grab. Jeff from veterans and meet out there to the Commission on Aging, you got everybody in, in line, just make sure that. How much they really, if they need to change their thing or not, I don't, I don't foresee that, but.
You change what thing?
And timing, the amount collected.
Yeah, their mileage amount, they're right. Does Commission on Aging want more than three quarters or less?
And they need to come to us and ask us.
Well, that's what I'm saying, just go and meet with them.
I don't wanna meet with them, I wanna focus on Headley.
No, then you missed, you missed the point of all of it.
That's fine, go ahead and do it your way, that's fine.
No, hold on, hold on, the the, the thought of this was is because there's gonna be four villages on, on. Next year's election, we need to come up with a strategic plan with everybody that's involved. As far as to find out what everybody's voice is, what their concerns are and how to, a plan to move forward to hopefully get these villages passed.
And and I understand what you're saying. But um. You mean they may wanna be on the February ballot too?
February, they may wanna be in August, they may wanna be, but leave that up to them, but that should, they should know what's going on with, you guys should all know what's going on. Who wants to go when and where? The last thing he wants voter exhaustion. You gotta come up with a strategic plan, and what better way to put y'all together? And talk about it.
It's just gathering all the stakeholders.
And the more information that you can put out there about the Headley with these very, these department heads and and. And it is running the departments, the better.
I just, okay, that's, that's fine, I just think it's a mistake to have everything clumped together.
No, no, but we're not clumping everything, that's a strategy, so we don't clump everything together. We work with these four different, so we don't clump everything together and then.
Put the plan, strategic plan.
We'll still have a, our own Headley. Group, our own Headley committee.
We got about two weeks to get this done.
Correct, so you two are on it. You good with that? You good with that?
Two weeks, we'll get together.
Commissioner Simmons, are you good with that?
Yeah, two weeks.
Budget committee, item five B. Commissioners, Simmons, I think you, you wanna take the role on this.
Say what?
Budget committee, item five B.
Well, the budget committee, and it's been discussed here also tonight, even with um. Uh Mister Booth. About being educated about how all this works and where the funds come from and, and what we're not getting, what we used to get, et cetera like that. So I. I would like to have um Commissioner on air. And it's two, it's two. The treasurer, accounts payable, accounts receivable, Tracy needs to be on there. Register D should be on there because of institutions and all, like she's got stuff from way back when and all the stuff that's been done. I think District Court needs to be on there, I talked to the under sheriff, I think he should be on there. And I think equalization definitely should be on that committee. And that's what I would like to see on this committee. So, Commissioner, or two commissioners. Uh, the treasurer. Tracy from the clerk's office, register deeds because of all the knowledge. The register has. Uh, District Court. Uh, the undersheriff and equalization. That's who I think should be on this committee, anybody have any comments?
What's the mission? What's the mission of the committee, I, uh, I was on the. Was in understanding. This committee was just non-going committee to look at. Budget as we went through the year, are we, are we where we should be each month? In, in all departments. And we're reviewing expenses and and everything like that, what, what are you trying to accomplish with this?
That, that is part of it. But also, they need to be educated on how the money comes in, how the money goes out, and how much money we get. And that we need to look at this not as just. My budget in my office. But the budget of the whole county. That's what I'm trying to get through, it's a budget of the county, we have X amount of dollars. What I'd really like to do is just give each department. Uh, look at, look at their uh history and give them, you get this much, you get this much, and you divide it up amongst your line items, how you wanna spend it. But that's all you're gonna get. And that, and that's always, for the, you have to go down, you don't have to go to line item. You can go to departments only. But that, that's a thought, and I think it should be discussed. Uh, on how to better do this, and that way the department heads can do their own budget with the money we give them. Versus us micromanaging, putting it in line items for them. It's just a thought, there are a lot of things that you can do out there, and I think the budget committee. Should, should uh look at all the, all these items. You know, just, just like the Headley, just.
How often would you meet them?
Uh, probably at least once a month, maybe more, we have to. And another thing, one, one of, uh, sorry, excuse me.
No, you're fine, go ahead.
And I don't think the, the commissioners on there should change like you change um going through claims. There's, there's no continuity there. I think they should be, the commissioner should be on there one year, two years. Not, you'll be on it for three months, then you're on it for three months, and somebody else is on it for three months. You, you won't make it. Because you're gonna lose all the continuity that's taking place with that committee. Person, personal.
So then only commissioners will do claims then the, the whole year then?
No.
Commissioner, hold on, Commissioner Wilson had a comment, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I, I agree with a lot of what Commissioner Simmons is saying, I like her list, I, I think we should also add uh. Tom from Corrections on there. Um.
Well, the undersheriff does Corrections and does the Sheriff, so.
Yeah, and I, I think that once this committee gets started, and I've been very adamant that I'd like to be on it, I don't know, we'll have to decide how we're gonna do that. Um, I think once a month, starting off and and as we get started, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna sit down at a table, we're gonna look at each other, we're gonna talk, and I think. Then we're gonna be able to see too, you know, what, how exactly we wanna structure this, where, what are we can go after. But at the end of the day, it's, it's all about being consistent, and you know, these are all strong um stakeholders, and it's gonna create accountability. A, a lot more accountability, so. Um. I'm, I'm all for this, I think it's great.
Commissioner Scott?
Well, I don't have a comment right now, just keep going, there may be something that'll come up.
Mr. Mania?
Nothing for me.
I, I'm in favor because I, I heard how well um from previous years that uh how effective it was. Um, getting to where we were this year, I, 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 I was quite stunned, um. With, with where we ended, um. In, in what was put. In front of us, um, I, I, again, I, I was. Uh, as far as what options we had um to move forward in the next year, so I'm a hundred percent in favor of this. Is, as long as the commissioners that are on that, this is nothing that I'm interested in, in being involved with. But um. Uh, come back to us and and report to all of us and and keep us all up to date on, on what is occurring. Is what my expectations are, and hopefully uh. Next year is gonna be different.
Can I add to?
Please.
So yeah, I agree, I mean, we gotta be completely transparent with each other, um, everything that happens with the committees needs to be transparent uh with the Commissioner Board. Um, I, I feel that is extremely important, so after we have our meetings, that next uh C, you know, C W meeting, it can be right on our agenda that we have. Uh, you know, say if it's me and Brenda, we, you know, we have. Our budget committee um. Feedback to you guys, and if that feedback would be exactly what we're working on, what we're doing. Um, cause transparency and and honesty on this is, is extremely important, that's how, how this is gonna work.
So when, do we need to reach out to each one of those individuals on your uh?
I've already reached out to a few. And then.
Tim, do you have anything to add to this?
No, no, it's a good idea.
But, I add one more thing.
Yes.
Um. I don't want this committee to be. Pointing the finger kind of committee. I wanted to, I would like it to be a fact-finding committee. Of where, where there may be some, some, some problems with our budget and how we're doing it. And, and all of us combined on this committee. And what's been done in the past, and we will have that knowledge there, and we'll have equalization there, and he knows what's coming up, and there may be, there, there. What I don't want is another rollback, and if there is, then we're gonna be getting less money. So, you know, that's stuff we need to look at because the way the economy went. Uh, last year. Just, just something to think about, so.
So Tim, can you, can you reach out to each one of those individuals and and make sure that there's an interest and that they're available to do this? Uh, we're gonna have to put this on for a resolution, correct?
The other one I don't know is District Court, the other one said yes. And they're available.
Question. So how are you doing claims in the next year?
I don't think, in my opinion, I don't think anything with claims changes.
Okay.
Um, I mean, you've got the printout.
We'll review them and sign off on them, but then when they meet, they'll wanna look over the claims too then.
No.
You don't wanna look over the expenses?
Well, they'll see them.
We will see them.
For the meeting.
I like looking at them, it.
Well, I do too, I mean.
No, I don't wanna look at them. I don't wanna look at the claims that we're paying right now. I wanna look at the whole. The whole. Jambalaya.
Right.
Not just these claims right here.
Right, and each person on.
Commissioners are looking at those claims, they're big enough, they can handle that.
Each, each person on this committee is gonna have a little different thing that they'd like to look at and a different thing to add, add to it. Like Tim said, he will print out the claims, so we can, we can see them if we wanna look at them.
The only thing I, the, cause you had a resolution already drawn up for this, correct? You had a.
I shot you a memo only because I wasn't at the last meeting, the whole meeting with just the ideas, you know, this.
Yeah, there was. There was so, some things on there I didn't, I didn't agree with, can you, can you uh, can you? send that back out to us again, or the, I guess the resolution will be on there, correct?
It will be. The memo's on your iPad for tonight's meeting too, just for reference.
There's another comment.
Go ahead.
The comment was, a part of it was to change the commissioners that are on there when they change doing claims. Uh, you're gonna lose all the continuity of that committee if you do that. You change, change commissioner every three months. Continuity is gonna be gone.
I agree.
I mean, it's gonna be gone.
I mean, we made it very clear that we're gonna be very transparent on this. And we can talk about, you know, I mean, every, every one of our COW meetings if we have to. I, I agree. I think you need to have longer than three months.
People that are on here, like especially equalization, you know, laws are changing all the time. And they're aware of it. And there's laws changing all the time and, and, and several of these uh key players that we have on here, just like the treasurer's office, some, some laws have been state changed at the state of Michigan, monies we're not getting anymore. So I, and then, you know, that happens again, say, oh, you know, this and that, the other thing's happening, and we're not gonna get this money, or it's changed, and now we're gonna get this money. So I, I think it would be nice if we knew that upfront versus wait until the end of the year and see what happens.
I, on this memo that was sent out, um, to maximize committee effectiveness, any recommended actions should be also should also be directed to me as chief administrative officer. What exactly does that mean?
So if there are things that you want, you, you can come through me to get it, or if there's action, you know, what, what, whatever. That's my job. So if the committee needs something, I'm the go-to.
Can, can something be stated in there that, that the, the, the board will be notified as well?
Um, there's actually a statement, yes.
I, I didn't see it. Pardon me?
One state, one sentence about the third paragraph down, the board must reserve to itself all decision-making authority. So you're not delegating any responsibility to this committee outside of reviewing and making recommendations back to this board.
I wanna, I wanna make sure that the board is aware of every decision. Everything, and I, I wanted to make sure that that isn't writing.
Excuse me?
Yes.
We cannot make any decisions as a committee.
I, I understand. I don't think any one person should be able to.
I don't want any one person to either. I want the commissioners to make the decisions. We can make the recommendations. And we can, we can bring also to you reasons why we recommended these. And uh the facts, the facts that are behind our recommendations will be brought out. But I, I don't like working in, in the blind right now. I really don't. I think this committee is the way to go.
So can I make one more comment?
Yeah.
It's just a, it's a special committee, and all we do is make recommendations for the commissioners.
That's it.
Correct. That wording, I, I just, I just want to make sure that, that any recommendation or suggestion is, is brought back to us too for the final decision. I, I want that in there.
Cause we can't make any decisions.
Correct. Okay.
Comment.
Yes, sir.
I, I would throw a little caution here. In past years back, and that would be even before me, back when there was seven on the board, and that's why I brought this up a while back, cause it used to be three commissioners, not a quorum. And they would bring in individual departments and talk to them on an individual basis. You're talking about a, a big committee with all these different departments. You're airing out somebody's budget in front of everybody. I just throw a little caution there that somebody may not want their budget and their expenses and how they're going that, that in the middle of the year, how their spending is going, air it out in front of everybody else.
Let's public.
Just saying, just saying. If I was a department head and I overspent something, maybe I don't want Brett to know.
And don't overspend.
Open meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
So you guys come up with the plan. Um, I guess, was there any other commissioners besides Commissioner Wiltsey and Commissioner Simmons that, that were as interested? Commissioner Scott, are you interested?
No.
Are you interested? Me neither, so. Are you two both moving forward? Perfect. Uh, item C, DOC request for staffing analysis.
Um, when we um are going through the review of the correctional facility with the DOC, when we had our phone conference with them, uh, they said we have to have a letter signed by both the sheriff and the board chair to initiate a staffing analysis, and this would be now an update, the one that was uh actually conducted in twenty nineteen and reported out in twenty twenty. That, uh, in their view, shows us as being proactive. Now, the situation we're in, obviously, there's, there's a change. Uh, but this will get them in the door and will, you know, assist us if they, if we are uh maintaining staffing levels, maintaining what they expect, you know, that's the kind of thing that they would review. Um, of course, as a five-person body, we can't just say chair signs that you have to vote to, to do that. So what I would like to see is a resolution with the letter uh on Thursday next week that would authorize the chair to sign that and get that process going.
I, I guess what's gonna be, we just, this, it wasn't that long ago that we did this, correct?
Twenty nineteen when they.
Oh, it was?
Yeah, it was reported out in twenty twenty, but um twenty nineteen when they were onsite and did their work.
No cost us?
No.
Questions, comments?
I mean, we, we already know it's gonna take a while for them to get here, so the sooner we get going on this, the better.
Commissioner Scott?
Absolutely. We need it.
Commissioner Simmons?
Going forth. So how does that, let's say they come back with analysis? And um, where less, do we hire all these people back?
No, um, there is no statutory requirement for minimum staffing.
Thank you.
So what they do is come through and give us their best opinion on, okay, what we should do it.
So then why do it?
Cause we don't do it, then they come in, do a say a surprise, but an unannounced inspection, and then they just issue a letter that says we're out of compliance. Well, this way we've at least shown the initiative. They can come in and do their analysis. They might still suggest that we have more than what we do. Uh, but it does get them up to date, and uh obviously the last time they did this, they based it on a hundred forty-four bed capacity. Uh, my challenge to them is to reduce that number by half and run their analysis that way. Uh, they did say there were a lot of things they have to consider, and that uh includes our uh inmate placement plans, the floor plan, the building, uh just any number of variables that they will review.
Couldn't this hurt us though if they come in and do this? And then they make a recommendation to increase staffing and we don't, then we're out of compliance, correct?
Right.
And then what?
Nothing. I mean, they're not gonna shut us down. You told us that. Um, but if we're aware of that, and if the board ends up saying we are uncomfortable with this too, then we plot a course to do something different. Um, but I wanna, once you recall, when we talked with the insurance carrier, they are basing our liability on the number of employees that we have. They're not gonna raise our rates just because we're not in compliance with what DOC recommends.
Questions?
Well, if we, if, if, like your scenario, you throw it at the budget committee and let them give us a recommendation on what's next about.
Good idea.
Well, that's, that's what it's all about. You analyze what the options are, and then the committee gives us, gives us a recommendation on what option to go with.
I was just concerned that doing this could cause more harm and realize that we are out of compliance and then do nothing about it and, and continue, you know, liability-wise.
I'm not suggesting we do nothing. You know, what they come back with, then that gives us at least a foundation to discuss what, what are we going to do?
Hi. So you guys in favor of this?
I am.
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner Mayhew? The DOC, are you in favor of this? The staffing analysis?
I guess.
Commissioner Simmons?
I'm not sure. I, I'm not sure if I am or not, cause I, I need to.
Um, do you have a question for either Mr. Howard or?
It's just kinda, kinda brought to it. I may talk to Mr. Howard later. Talk to him about it, but um maybe even tomorrow.
Is this something that you guys are on board with? Commissioner, or not Commissioner, I'm looking right at you. I'm sorry. Is this something?
It's up to you guys on this. You're making the sense. They're gonna say what we need. It's up to you guys to get the, this is what you want.
Are you recommending this? Is this something that you're in favor of having DOC come in here and do the staffing analysis?
Said one three years ago, so we'll come back and do another one. I don't know. If it's gonna make a difference if you come back. It's not gonna really make a difference in there.
They will put it on. Any information needed to gather, gather, Commissioner Simmons. Item D, application for appointment to opiate settlement advisory committee.
Uh, had to resign from the committee. Justin Rogers, the EMS director uh has agreed to, to serve. He's actually participated in the last uh two meetings. I don't know if he was at the first one or not.
Last two.
Um, very active participant. I, I, I have to say, I've actually been pretty impressed with him. I've been able to talk to him uh outside of the meetings as well. Uh, but because we um actually had brought assigned to the committee, now we have a vacancy, and Justin has agreed to fill that if you are in agreement.
Absolutely.
Just to add to that, Justin is our new director at the EMS. Very, very gifted, talented individual, but last two opiate meetings he's been at, he's uh brought a lot to the table, asked a lot of good questions. Will be definitely a big asset to us.
He seems very involved. Okay, thank you. Item E, appointment to DHHS board.
A letter here from the DHHS board. They would like us to reappoint uh Jane Alstetter to the DHHS board.
This person's, I don't see expiration on this. Is this a?
I think it's a three-year term. I'll double check that and make sure it's in the resolution.
I can make a comment on that. The liaison with DHHS. Um, I work with Jane at all the meetings. She's really highly respected there, and at her last meeting, she wasn't able to be there. Um, but the current board, I was really hoping that she'd come back on board because she does not, not for them.
And you'll find out on the term for that?
I will. It'll actually be in the resolution.
Okay. Item F, housing pro, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Please.
Do we have anybody that has applied for a position on a committee? In the bullpen, somebody in?
Nope.
Oh, okay. I'm fine with it.
Housing program, uh CDBG program income help, public health hearing notice.
Okay, this is just to give you a heads up uh for the CDBG program. Man needs to have a public hearing on the, at the next meeting on the twenty-sixth. Um, just to present the program income. It's actually a requirement of CDBG. I don't think it's gonna take a long time, but it will be on the agenda as a public hearing.
And that's for funds for the eighty-five thousand eight hundred forty ninety-nine.
Fisher?
Right, yes.
Okay.
She's done very well at.
She does very well.
I need monies. Uh, any questions for that on that, guys?
No, I don't. It's just a technicality, yes.
Item G, Pledge of Allegiance Day, December twenty eighth.
Okay, um I had a call from Ladonna earlier in the week. Um, the twenty-eighth, um, and she said it is Pledge of Allegiance Day, but on that day, uh nine o'clock, the veteran of the year will be here to actually lead the Pledge of Allegiance, and as we were brainstorming, we thought, well, your meeting that night is scheduled for five thirty. Maybe you wanna do a nine o'clock meeting and have that uh activity lead off the board meeting. Uh, just a thought, and no decision needs to be made tonight. The Pledge of Allegiance is going to happen on the twenty-eighth at nine o'clock, whether we're meeting or not. Uh, but it just, uh, we were brainstorming and thought, well, that might be kind of a neat thing for the board, uh, be involved in.
On the December twenty eighth?
Right.
Can you get a flyover? I'd do it nine o'clock if I see some jets fly over or something like that, but other than that, I'd just soon enough change the meeting date. Meeting time.
You don't wanna change it?
I don't.
I think, I think we should, I think we should reach out to the veteran of the year to ask if, if the nine o'clock would, would work better for this individual.
Well, he's gonna do it nine o'clock anyway.
That's what, yeah, I, I don't know about the program, but that's right now, it's what's on the books, since he'll be here at nine o'clock to do that.
On the twenty eighth?
Ask him if he'll come back.
All the time.
Just the time. Be nine o'clock instead of five thirty.
I mean, so that way he would leave the pledge for our meeting, correct?
Right.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
I think we tried to do, and we've done pretty well about being consistent with our times and not changing it, so people are getting confused on that and whatever, where we're at. Can we ask him if he could? Let's ask him.
Two, it's nine o'clock someplace.
Well, I, that's fine with me. But if it can be at five thirty, that'd be great.
Yeah.
That's a cool. We're asking ahead of time, so maybe you can change your schedule that we can do it to our five thirty meeting.
Okay. Budget, you wanted something on the budget, Commissioner?
Yes, um, I have some questions, um. You know, we, we passed, we passed the budget uh the latter part of, latter part of September. And we made the decision, although it took a long time to do it. Um cause the budget was a really hard thing for us to do this time because of these layoffs. But we came to an agreement to pass that budget, to make it a balanced budget. And as I look at it and peruse it through my thoughts right now, um our budget isn't balanced now. Because if we'd have put out those um pink slips for another reason, I don't know, that's usually the column, uh layoffs. Um, this probably would have been the last week of, of working. And now we have pushed it down the line, and when we had that meeting that night, um we talked about a continuing resolution, and it was recommended, no, we don't. Because we'd just be continuing our debt and getting more in debt. And when I look at that, you know, it went a different, a different way, but basically that's kind of what we have done is done a continuing resolution because those people have not been laid off because they're looking into something else. And my thoughts are this, you know, because I, I, we need a balanced budget, and Mr. Wiltsey stressed that that night. And um I think we need a balanced budget too. I think we should go ahead with those uh layoffs. And if something else does come up, um, you know, uh where somebody else leaves or what, then we can call them back at that point. But right now, we are really in a continuing resolutions position, cause we're still paying for, for those individuals that we decided to lay off. And we're still paying for them and, and collecting debt. And if we continue to do that um to balance the budget, it may lead to, I've been thinking, since we're paying this out and it's really not in our budget, it may lead to having to lay off more people off to make up the difference between what we're paying out for this entire month. And to balance the budget, are we, are we paying this amount of money? It's like, hmm, do we have to lay off two more people to make up for what we spent now? Uh, past us, us passing that. I'm trying to keep us out of trouble. It's something to think about. I highly recommend that we pass those um, those be, those uh layoffs be given out now. And if something else does come up in the, you know, later, uh, more money or someone retires or fill a spot, then we call that person back, but I would wait until that point rather than let it continue going like it is now, and we keep spending the money that we don't have. And, and another thought is if someone like wants to retire, then, then uh let them retire. But to coerce or, or pay someone to retire with money that we don't have, uh, I think is a big mistake. You know, if someone wants to retire, then that's their decision. And we, and I don't feel we could try to coerce them into retiring because we're gonna give them some money, extra money that we don't have. So it makes that bill bigger now. And I'm not convinced that those two retiring is gonna save that much, that much money. I haven't seen any figures. Um, because they're gonna fill those lieutenant slots with two more lieutenants, maybe a smaller wage, but still they're still gonna be there. So that's my recommendation that we do those layoffs now rather than continuing to increase our debt. And if something doesn't come to fruition, is it gonna lead to him to lay off one or two others to make up for what we've just spent?
Tim, I guess where are we with this? I have heard no updates neither.
Um, I think a lot of those concerns are gonna be addressed in the closed session.
And I, yes.
There is, uh, there are a lot of moving parts to this. Uh, it, uh, requesting that you do the closed session because it does impact one collective bargaining agreement and likely would regardless of what we do tonight. Uh, but I, I do wanna take you through um uh several points that I have uh to distribute in the closed session.
Okay.
And then um, yeah, I, I think it's gonna duck down nicely into what Commissioner Simmons has just introduced.
Okay. I, I, yeah, I, I agree with that, but let's do public comment before we go in the closed session, cause I, I think there was an individual here that, that looked like they wanted to make public comment. Come on up, ma'am.
Um, yes.
You didn't, you know, do you, you know the rules? I have to tell you them. Uh, come on up.
Um, yeah, my name is Stephanie Brendel. Um, I'm here to address the commissioners today regarding some safety issues that we've had on Peach Lake. Um uh, it's a public lake and um due to loss of Sanford, Smallwood, Forest, Wicksum and Seacord Lakes, the traffic there has increased substantially on our lake. Um, we've also had um three to five new residents move on. Um, we've also had, um, three to five new residents move onto the lake, um, and for whatever reasons. They don't follow the laws, um, providing safety or rules on the water or boarding safety. Um, I've witnessed on a weekly basis, many of our new residents, um, jet skiers without life jackets. Towing skiers without spotters, underage children with no life jackets. Um, underage operators of jet skis, and boats on the lake close to docks and lists. One skier made contact with one of my lists, all three weeks back, um, that was very disturbing to me, had a child in tow. No life jackets. Um, many area residents also have ATVs, and these are also being driven by children. Um, we're talking children, um, some of these children in boats are under the age of two, two to five. We have children on jet skis like nine, ten, eleven, ATVs as well, with no helmets or, um, eyewear. Um, I was told by the Marine Division of the Sheriff's Department that they are paid by. Uh, Logamal Lake Association patrol, patrol that right on weekends. I have a problem with that, I have a problem greatly with that. Um, reason being is because it leaves our lake without, and many lakes, public lakes, without anyone. Taking notice of what's going on on these lakes, and I, I agree, that part of the problem on residents on the lake. Because they feel that no one's coming out, no one's checking on us, we can do whatever we want. Well, that's really not, not, shouldn't be the case. Um, the state does provide money for our Sheriff's Department Marine Division. Um, that's who pays for our Marine Division, is the state. Um, my goal here today was to bring notice to this issue to the commissioners. Um, and have a part of the public record, hopefully this will bring attention to not only the commission, but the Sheriff's Department as well. That we have a public safety issue there, and I wanted to brought the attention of. Well, here in the Sheriff's Department, if we were to tally on that lake, or any lake for that now. Um, I hope that, uh, we can see more patrols out there at the boat launch, and next summer, the local residents will become more education. Educated on this, and we don't have any issues.
Thank you. Can you spell your last name?
Um, yes, it's B R A E N D L E.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? Oh, no public comment on the phone, can I have a motion for a closed session for strategy session connected with the negotiations of a collective bargaining agreement?
I'll make a motion to go into closed session for negotiation of collective bargaining agreements by MCL fifteen point two six eight.
See? A second.
We have a motion for su, with support to go in the closed session at seven oh three, all in favor?
This, useful.
Like you said now, go ahead, Brett. Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Jenny Davis. Greg Scott.
Yes.
Charles Wiltsey.
Yes.
Not come on, yeah, go in.
You know when it is?
If you go in, it is.
And who's all? It's just the board right now, unless you wanna include anybody else, but.
Make sure on this?
Do you wanna be in here? Um, at this stage, let's say no.
And, and. Motion to adjourn.
We gotta wait till the doors open, do adjourn.
Oh. Gonna open back up. All right, well done.
That was a long meeting.
Mister Wilson, uh, you're gonna, if you're gonna be part of this, uh.
Big football game around, I.
We need.
I better tune in.
Come up with a, a date.
Who cares?
I, I can, cause I'm here a lot.
Care a little.
Were included in this, that we included, and we could put Tom on there, turns his ITs, I don't have a problem with that, but, um. Talk to them and see which.
Gonna make them.
And I wanna during the, the business.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Seven thirty six, support on favor?
Aye.
I agree, let's talk tomorrow on the committee. Talk some more about it. You know.
I'll talk to you tomorrow.
What about my beer? You know.
Now too, I got a big football game around, I, and I go get some rest. I'm like a nervous Nelly before this stuff.